We've got our candidates from Eastmont School District and candidates from Wenatchee School District, and they are eager and excited to share with you why they want this job. We are grateful that they want this job at such an important time, not only in our community's history, but in our country's history. So, thank you so very much. I'm going to first kick this off by thanking our sponsor of these, which is our Coffee and Commerce sponsor Jake Davidson Insurance. We have a short video from Jake we're going to play here for you in just a minute, and then we'll come back, we'll go over the forum rules, and we'll get right into it. So, a big thank you to Jake Davidson with American Family Insurance, and here's a video from our sponsor. Awesome. Jake has been an awesome partner this year. He's got a couple more of these to go. We're so grateful he could be part of this with us. So, everybody knows this is a forum, not a debate. I know that sounds different, but there is a difference. We will not let our candidates go to blows head to head. We really just simply want to know why they are the best people, why they are maybe the craziest of us in the room, because they're actually trying to do this thing called Hold a Public Office, and why we should elect them. So, we have told them they have 90 seconds to answer the questions we're going to give them. We have prepared two questions for them that we will ask. They have those in advance. They've also had the opportunity to prepare a question for their opponent. At the 75-second mark, if I did my math correctly, I will hold up for those candidates a 15-second sign, and then when that time is up, I will tell them thank you for their answer. So, we're going to kick off our program with our candidates from Eastmont School District, number three, Annette Eggers and Jason Hines. So, at this point, I'm going to ask all the other beautiful candidates that are handsome candidates that are with us today to go ahead and take their videos and turn them up. And we'll just leave Annette and Jason up. There's Annette. And we're going to start with Annette, and give her the first question, then we're going to go to Jason. We're going to ask him the same question, and then we'll flip back, and we'll ask Jason question number two, and then give Annette a chance to offer or answer. And then, Annette, you will get the chance to ask Jason your first question, and you'll get to respond, and then Jason, you'll get to ask Annette her question, and then we'll thank you both for joining us. Sound like a plan? You guys ready to do this? Awesome. So, Annette, here's our first question for you. What is the most significant issue facing the Eastmont School District in the next four years? And how do you propose the board address it?
Thank you, Shiloh. As I've said before, as Jason has, as everyone knows, we are going to be selecting a new superintendent at Eastmont School District. And it's not just the hiring. When we talk about the next four years, it's selecting, evaluating, and monitoring and directing a new superintendent to see, make sure that the choice that's been made is perfect for our district. As a 16-year board member, I've been under three superintendents, and the superintendent can make or break the district. And I know where Eastmont was when I came on the board, and I know where we've came to. I know what I'm looking for. I know how to direct, how to observe, how, what reports to pay attention to, what the expectation is from a community level, a state level, and a federal level. In addition to our superintendent, we also have two other significant people in our central office, the HR Director and the Director of Finance, that are both leaving at the end of the year. And again, paying attention, knowing the expectation, knowing what reports to watch for, that's going to make sure that Eastmont is going in the direction that is expected from our community, our staff, and our families. And with my experience, I believe I have the right tools to make sure that we stay on that direction. Thank you.
Thank you, Annette. All right, Jason, same question to you. I'm muted myself. Same question to you. What is the most significant issue facing the Eastmont School District in the next four years? And how do you propose the board?
Okay, thanks, Shiloh. I appreciate it. So, as Annette said, yes, hiring the next superintendent is going to be the, probably the one of the most biggest issues facing Eastmont School District. With my background in leadership, I worked for Wild on Fire Management for the US Forest Service, and I've taken many leadership classes, actually helped develop leadership classes. So, I know the traits and the attributes that we want in a school superintendent, being a good communicator, a visionary, somebody that is visible within the school district and is representing the community that we live in. They have to be all in. They have to, you know, they're the voice of the school district, but they also have to have the community support. I'm also going to tear off of that. I think another issue facing the school district, Eastmont School District and all school districts, is getting back local control. We are seeing a lot of state mandates, especially with COVID, and a lot more governing at the state level. And so, my, one of my passions is to be looking for options to get local control back at the local level.
Again, I'm going to learn how to mute and unmute myself. Thank you so much, Jason, for that answer. Okay, so Jason, we're going to start again with you for question number two. You guys are doing fantastic. With one or two meetings a month, all school boards are limited in what they can do. How does or should the board decide what is most important?
Make sure I unmute myself. Okay. So, yeah, so there are required stuff and big issues that the board has to address, and you're absolutely correct. With roughly nine months of the school year, there's two board meetings, and then usually in the summer, they do one boarding meeting a month, so roughly around 20 board meetings a year total. There's certain stuff that has to be done. There's budget, there's, you know, school calendars. There's stuff that have to get done. You know, one of the things that they do at the end of each board meeting at Eastmont is ask, are there any future issues or items that we want to address? And those are from school board members or school board directors that are saying, yes, we should talk about this, we should talk about that. I want to be a voice of the community. I want the community to be able to call me, text me, email me, let me know what their concerns are. You know, I think as school board directors, we have our own opinions, and which is fine, but I think we represent the community and having, you know, going out and having coffee and just saying, hey, this is where I'll be. If you have issues, come see me, come talk to me. And then I can bring them up to the board, or having some type of poll, or questionnaire that is sent out to parents, you know, what would you like to see at the school district? What are we failing on, or what are we missing the mark on? And what can we do better in the future? But yeah, so there are required items, but I think there is some room in board meetings to be able to get public input.
Jason, thank you for that answer. Annette, back to you. Same question. With one or two meetings a month, all school boards are limited in what they can do. How does or should the board decide what is most important?
Thank you, Shiloh. How do we decide what's most important? The first thing that we do at Eastmont is we have an established board calendar for a whole year, and we have specific things on there. We meet at every school building or facility. Our last board meeting was at our Transportation and Maintenance Office, probably the only people that have had a school board meeting in the wash bay of where the buses get washed. It was a great, a great experience to see that, to see some of our new buses. And we have that same experience, which we missed last year, in each, going to each of our buildings. The parents, the staff, the students from those schools are, I mean, they can go to any school board meeting, but they're specifically invited to that building to share with us. So, besides that, the new things that happen, we're a policy governance board. And we make sure that our policies direct our, reflect our strategic plan, and those policies are what then direct our superintendent and our staff of where we want to go, making sure that we're up to date on our policies. That's really important. And we do that regularly. Regularly, you'll see policies, they're usually two times written. Communication, we have a community, a time for all community to speak to us. We also have an individual school board email. We know what's going on. We know when people are not happy, because they're emailing us, they're calling us. They, they know, we know, and we address that at different times.
Time is, all right. Thank you. No, it's great information. All right, so I'm doing this through, and next is the fun part. It's the question for the candidates by the candidates, which I love. We are going to have Jason ask Annette his question first, so that Annette gets to answer first, since we've been ping-ponging back and forth. So, Jason's looking a little confused, because we kind of said that a little different in our tech run-through, but way to be on the fly, Jason. So, Jason, your question for Annette, and we'll let Annette unmute, and we'll start the time.
Okay, yeah, sorry about that, Shiloh. I'd taken it different last time. So, well, good morning, Annette. I'm glad you're here. Glad we're doing this for, I don't know, the 17th time together. So, I appreciate seeing you this morning again. My question for you is, hiring of the school board superintendent is a main focus of the Eastmont School District. Is that the only reason that you have decided, being a school board member for 16 years, is that the only reason that you have decided to retain your position on the school board?
Thanks, Jason. It is nice to see you as well. Is it the only reason? Absolutely not. It's not the only reason. It is a significant reason. The direction of our school district is so important to me, and I know that that comes from, from the position of the superintendent. I have three going to, next year, be four grandkids in school. And I want to keep Eastmont a great place to learn. And I, I want to make sure that we transition back to local control. I want to make sure that we continue having good graduation rates, that we continue forming Eastmont to what our community values and expectations are. So, yes, it was a significant reason, but it's not the only reason.
Excellent. Annette, it is your turn to ask Jason your question.
Great. So, Jason, my question is, is how have you and how long have you prepared for a school board position?
Can I have her repeat that question? It seemed like she was a little glitchy there. I apologize. I didn't want to make sure I didn't miss anything.
Annette, can you repeat the question for Jason?
Sure. For how long and what have you done to prepare for the school board position?
Thanks. Thanks, Annette. Yeah, I just wanted to make sure I didn't miss anything. So, how long have I prepared for the school board position? I would say about six to eight months. I started thinking about this after the first of the year and deciding to run, so I guess now at 10 months. I had to put in my candidacy about seven months ago, but, so about eight months, I have decided that I wanted to run for school board. I've reached out to other directors on the school board and talked to them. And the reasons why, and I went back and I've read all the notes, all the school board meetings. I printed off all the school board packets that are sent out. I come to every meeting right now with the school board packet available, reading, you know, all the stuff on SROs and everything else, and the budget items that have been addressed here lately in the school board meetings, as well as, I think I'm a good candidate, because I coach. I have the ear. I have two daughters that are in the school district. And so, hearing what their needs and wants and desires are, coaching multiple levels of basketball and fast pitch has gained me the knowledge of what I think a school board member can be. And I just think I have a passion for a public office. I've been a GWGSA, which is a Little Girls Fast Pitch President for the past about five years. I'm part of Eastern Natche Events Board, and I just think this was the next step, and I want to give back to the youth and back to the community. So, thank you.
Excellent. Well, you both can take a big, deep breath. You have done it. You've completed the Wenatchee Valley Chamber of Commerce Candidate Forum Gauntlet. Thank you so much for being with us today. Thank you so much for having the courage to run and serve in public office. We appreciate you. There's two of you there. There's a whole bunch of us not anywhere near this election race at this point in time, so you should feel good about that. So, thank you, Annette. Thank you, Jason, for joining us this morning. We are going to transition here shortly into our Wenatchee School District races. But before we do that, I want you to know that there is a district-at-large number four position up for Eastmont School District as well. That's John Stewart and Joy Dawd that are running for that. Unfortunately, both of those candidates could not join us this morning due to the timing of this forum. But I have good news for everyone online. These guys have all participated in our Voters Guide, which is in the mail to our members. We also have copies of these here in the office, the chamber, and it's posted on our website, wenatche.org. So, if you are wanting to find out information about John or Joy or any of the candidates with us today, please visit the website, come on down, check your mailboxes if you're a member. These will be arriving to you shortly. So, we're going to move into the Wenatchee School Board Candidate Forum. We're going to go by the number of the positions. So, we're going to start with position number two, which is Maria Eninges and Matt Van Bogart. Then we'll go into position number four, which is Michelle Sandberg and Catherine Thomas. And then we'll finish with position number five, Julie Norton and Miranda Skoliski. So, a big thank you and welcome to Maria and Matt. We're glad to have you with us this morning.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Same rules apply. We're going to ask you two questions that we've prepared for you, and then you both have a wonderful question that you've come up for the other. We're going to give you 90 seconds. Stick to that as hard as you possibly can without me being too rude and cutting you off, but I'll do it if I need to. You guys have been great. I know you'll do great. So, we're going to start right off. We're going to start with Maria. Then we'll go to Matt for the second question. Then, Matt, you're going to ask Maria your question, and then we'll have Maria ask you the final question. Sound good?
Sounds good.
All right, here's your, I don't know, 10 minutes of fame with the Wenatchee Valley Chamber of Commerce. Maria, the first question we have is, what kind of relationships should the board have with its community, with its parents, and with its family?
Yeah, thank you, Shiloh. Yeah, so we're all stakeholders in our children's education. The work of the school district and the board is directly tied with the work of the community. So, it's essential that the board has a positive relationship with the community, parents, and also students. When there's an issue in our, that affects our schools, it impacts the community as well. So, the relationship between the two is really interdependent. We, as board members, need to continue to have honest conversations with our community, parents, and students. For me, it's my duty and honestly my privilege to reach out and connect with our families. This has been one of the, my favorite parts of the, of being on the school board for the last over a year and a half, and getting, and really getting to know the families in our community, and whether they're Spanish speakers or English speakers, and listening to their concerns. But I also know we need to find different ways to engage our community outside of our board meetings. For example, prior to COVID, the superintendent, a board, another board member, myself, were going out to the community events, where we were going out to meetings being hosted at different community events and in community centers, and the turnout was amazing. And the dialogue and engagement was something that I had never, ever seen before. So, coming into their space allowed for really frank and honest conversations. So, I'm hoping that we are able to pick up on those, that, that conversations that we were, that we kind of put on hold because of COVID.
Great. Thank you for that answer. Matt, you're up. Same question. What kind of relationship should the board have with its community, with its parents, and its families?
Yeah, thanks, Shiloh. This is actually a question that I really love to answer, so I appreciate the opportunity. You know, from my perspective, the relationship needs to be something that's interactive, something that is transparent, and built really around discussion and having a two-way conversation, as well as one that's in person. I've been advocating for the last six months, this, this, this concept of doing town halls, where there's interactive two-way communication between parents, business leaders, community members, grandparents, as well as other stakeholders, students as well, staff, teachers, et cetera, to have an open and honest dialogue and conversation about some of the challenges that we have in front of us. There's a lot of smart people in this valley that have tons and tons of great ideas that really want to support the district moving forward. So, I would advocate for these types of town hall events to have this two-way, two-way conversation. You know, when you look at the responsibility of the board, it really is to advocate for the community, and there's nothing better than advocating by listening to and hearing what's happening in our community and being available to, to the stakeholders.
Thank you for that answer. Okay, so Matt, we're going to start with you for question number two. And that is, districts often undertake a facility study to help plan for new construction, renovation, and maintenance and energy improvements of their facilities. What are the district's current facility needs? And if elected, how would you garner support to pay for these investments?
Yeah, this is another important issue that's facing our district right now. And I've talked to tons of staff, teachers, students, et cetera, to get feedback. You know, it's clear that there are systems and maintenance issues that need to be prioritized and make sure that our kids have safe, clean schools to be in. There's also a whole nother group of capital improvement projects that we need to be evaluating and looking at. You know, there's an opportunity, and there's been a lot of discussion about, for example, building a new high school. I know that a lot of the facilities around the district need attention, and I think what I bring is some really innovative, out-of-the-box thinking to solve some of these problems. So, maybe rather than building a new high school, maybe we build a smaller facility that's just for freshmen, and we spend additional money to renovate the high school. Again, I think that there's opportunities to bring new, new, fresh ideas to solve some of these problems. I think another challenge is that the community would be willing to support a bond issue, but it costs anywhere between $2 and $3 million to put together a bond proposal. And I think that we would be challenged today by the community supporting the bond when there's really lack of trust, lack of transparency in some cases. And when you look at overall student performance, you know, we've seen declines over the course of the last decade. So, I think we need to turn around some of those areas and provide some proof points to the community, and then seriously consider what we need to do to support these capital investments.
Great. Thank you, Matt, for that answer. Maria, same question to you. I'm going to repeat it. Districts often undertake a facility study to help plan for new construction, renovation, major maintenance, and energy improvements of their facilities. What are the district's current facility needs? And if elected, how would you garner support to pay for these investments? We're both muted. Sorry, Maria. Okay.
Okay, here we go. Here you go. So, actually, a facility study was done with the prior district administration, and under the current administration, a firm and architect company reviewed the study and confirmed what we already knew. We need to update our high school. So, the next step for that was to create a citizens committee. And again, COVID stalled that process, so we've kind of taken care of that piece that we need to revisit. But anybody that spent time at Wenatchee High School will tell you that the high school has really inadequate environments for teaching and learning. And so, when you have classrooms that don't have windows or classrooms that are too small, ventilation, that's terrible. There's no question that we need to improve that space. But there's also elementary schools that need that, that, those upgrades and renovations, for example, Lewis and Clark and Mission View. But before we can even go there, we need to really look at our, do a boundary study, which we had a demographic study done recently by Davis Demographics, so that we can really invest our money where it's really needed for the future of what our numbers will look like in the future. One of the things that we can do to garner support for this is, the board and the superintendent really need to be out in the community and involve them and make the community a priority in this process. I know this personally, because I have worked on two previous bonds, specifically with the Wenatchee School District. And I know what it means, that improving our, we need to improve our communication in the process of transparency to get that support. You're muted.
I keep doing that. See, so you guys aren't alone. All these Zoom meetings, you would think I would know where the mute button is. Okay, so this next question is one that the candidates have prepared for their opponents, which is exciting. We're going to start with Matt. Matt gets to ask his question of Maria first, and then Maria, you'll get to ask your question of Matt. So, Matt, your question for Maria this morning?
Yeah, so my question for Maria is, what specific practical hands-on experience do you bring to help Wenatchee School District navigate a continued decline in student proficiency scores, as well as some of the pending financial headwinds?
You're muted.
I'm sorry. Can you repeat the question, Matt?
Yeah, yeah, sorry. It's kind of long. So, what specific practical hands-on experience do you bring to help the Wenatchee School District navigate the continued decline in student proficiency scores and financial headwinds?
Oh, that's a great question. So, I bring over 16 years of professional experience in education. I have worked specifically with the school district, for the Wenatchee School District, for 12 years, and in different capacities, I've worked with the Learning and Teaching Department, special programs. So, I have a really good understanding of what the dynamics of the district. I understand the, the student population. Our district is 53% Latino. I can identify with a lot of those students and meet the, understand the, the, the things that they need, the supports, not the things, but the supports that they need, so that we can increase the education in our students, the proficiency and achievement of our, all of our students. I, my educational background is, has been in education. So, not only do I bring 16 years of professional experience, I also bring high level of education with research done specifically in education and standardized testing, which is what I wrote my masters in. In regards to finance, the financial piece of it, I, like I said, I have worked for the Wenatchee School District, where I did manage state and federal programs. I was the director in, the coordinator in those programs, where we dealt specifically with budgets balancing, dabbled into some BA funds, but specifically with state and federal grants and dollars.
Right. Thank you, Maria. Now, your turn to ask your customized question for Matt.
Perfect. Okay, Matt, what specific policies do you see as a primary obstacle to achieving better education outcomes for all of our students in Wenatchee? And what changes would you make to those policies to better equip our district in achieving, achieving better educational outcomes for all of our students?
Yeah, thank you for that. Yeah, I've spent, you know, a fair amount of time looking through the policies within, within the Wenatchee School District. And I think outside of, you know, items that I've already mentioned, like, like the sexual education opt-in, opt-out policy. You know, I'm fairly happy with, with, with policies that are in place. Again, I've advocated for a specific focus around, around making significant improvements to academic performance, and I'd love to see a much stronger language written into the strategic plan that accommodates for this. So, any, any policy that, that is involving core subjects, math, reading, science, et cetera, and making sure that we focus the vast majority of our efforts and investment on those topics, I would completely advocate for. And I think that this is, it should be the number one priority and focus of the Wenatchee School District.
Thank you, Matt. Wow, you both have successfully completed the gauntlet that is the Wenatchee Valley Chamber of Commerce School Board Candidate Forums. Right now is when you would get your accolades and applause and the cheering. The crowds would be going wild, but you can't see them, but we're still going wild. So, thank you for joining us this morning. Thank you for running for office. Once again, I will give a shameless plug for our Voters Guide. If you want more information on these two candidates, you can find it online or in your mailbox, coming soon. Next up, you're welcome. Next up, we're going to have Michelle Sandberg and Catherine Thomas. There they are. Excellent. Good morning, ladies.
Good morning.
Joining us. So, again, we're going to start off with Michelle, and then the second question, we'll start with Catherine. And then Catherine, you'll get to ask your question of Michelle, and Michelle, you're going to ask your question of Catherine. 90 seconds. We've given you the two. You've got one prepared. You guys ready to do this? All right. So, Michelle, we're going to start with you. Question number one, from your current perspective, if you were to grade the district, Wenatchee School District, from A+ to an F, how would you say it's performing? And if re-elected, how would you work to improve or maintain the grade you have given it?
Thank you, Shiloh, for your question. You know, I know that as school board members throughout our state, we always are looking to improve, and we know that we are, we do not have an A+. I would say that in some areas, we have an A, and other areas, we might be failing. So, I'll be fair and say we probably I'll be fair and say we probably have a C. Some people might agree with me, some might say higher or lower, but that's what I would give it. In terms of our strategic plan, I think that is going to help address some of our deficiencies. You know, we have a different superintendent that we had a couple of years ago. So we're looking to to really address areas of improvement with our academic import, our academic performance, improving that and also addressing areas like some of our aging facilities. Those are just two areas that I think are more concerning, but we we have lots of work to do and I don't think our board has been shy about addressing it. It has been challenging with COVID just to to kind of have that community input. As Maria kind of made reference to, you know, it's hard to have gatherings when you're in a pandemic, but we are always welcome to feedback. I've always been welcome to that. So I want to continue to work with our entire board to to focus where our needs need to be. It's not a one board member decision. And our teamwork is essential. And I've been part of a team that's pretty cohesive. So I would appreciate being in that position.
Your time is up. Great. Catherine, same question for you. Here we go. From your current perspective, if you were to grade the Wenatchee School District on a scale of A+ to F, how would you say it's performing? And if elected, how would you work to improve or maintain the grade you have given?
Well, good morning, Shiloh. Hi, thank you for the question. Our report card from OSPI says that only 53% of our students meet the standards in English. Only 43% of our students meet their standard in science. And at 37% of our students meet the standard in math. Those are failing grades. And so I would give our district a failing grade. If elected, I would push to return to the basics of education. I feel like the district's grade can only be as good as the students' grades.
Okay, thank you so much for that answer. All right. So we're going to start with you, Catherine, for question number two. When preparing the district's budgets, excuse me, when preparing the district's annual budget, I will get it out this morning, ladies. What questions should board members consider prior to approval?
And the questions I think that the the board should consider are most importantly, number one, does the budget align with the board's goals and objectives? Because the money will always follow the beliefs. Number two, does it put core education or the basics first? Number three, are you spending the community's money wisely? And number four, how does the budget align with enrollment? Our enrollment is down somewhere between 400 and 500 students right now. And our private schools are completely packed. That's not an issue of low birth rates. That's an issue of parents dissatisfaction with what's happening in our schools. So and finally, what is left over for savings and future capital projects? But those are those are the primary questions that that I think should be asked when when looking at the budget.
Thank you, Catherine. Michelle, same same question to you. When preparing the district's annual budget, what questions should board members consider prior to approval?
Thank you, Shiloh. So one of the things that that's great about the the budget process is that there's kind of a preliminary budget and the questions often get generated from that. One of the things that we look at are obviously class sizes. We have K3 class size limitations that we want to be able to meet. So we get funding to make sure that those class sizes are small enough. Our impact on staffing, again, as Catherine mentioned, we are predicting that we will have decreased enrollment. There is a downward trend. And yes, people do sometimes leave to send their kids to private school or homeschooling. But those downward trends in the birth rate are going to affect our district. And there's always new challenges. In the last year and a half, we've had COVID and that's been a big challenge because you can't use the COVID dollars just for whatever you want. You have to use them for very specific things related to COVID and there are tough audits on that. So again, those are the things that I think you have to consider. In addition to the things that Catherine mentioned, we always do want to be fiscally responsible with our dollars, both our tax dollars and other dollars that we are receiving, whether it's through COVID or other sources. But you know, it's it's fiscal responsibility is the number one thing that our board has to try to do. We have to maintain a particular reserve.
Thank you. Okay, on to the third questions, the questions that you have prepared for each other. I think if I remember this right, Catherine, you get to ask Michelle your question first, then Michelle, you will ask Catherine her question. So I'm turning it over to you, Catherine.
Okay, Michelle, why are you willing to have kids in school now when our COVID numbers are so much higher than they were the two times that you voted to not return kids to school full-time last year?
Thank you for your question, Catherine. I look forward to answering this. So as we all know, we don't have a crystal ball. We don't know what our numbers look like. And we do know that the Delta variant is actually a more challenging variant. However, we have more mitigating strategies and more information about COVID. So there were a lot of unknowns. I think scientifically, we wanted to keep our students safe. We wanted to keep our staff safe. Much of this discussion was kind of going before our teachers were even able to be vaccinated. So there were a lot of concerns. But additionally, our teachers really communicated that our hybrid model at the time was really meeting a lot of our students' needs. Our students who were most vulnerable, who were fragile, they were able to get interventions before or after that time that the students were in school for half a day. So that personalized instruction really made a difference. And many students, because the smaller class size was less intimidating, we had some of those more fragile, more vulnerable students opening up for the first time in classrooms, and it was really exciting. So we wanted to be sure that we were meeting those academic goals because we know that online was a struggle for a lot of students. So hybrid really seemed to be functioning well for a majority of our students, especially the ones who were most vulnerable, who were furthest behind.
All right, thank Michelle for that answer. And now it's your turn to ask Catherine the question you have prepared for her.
Sure. The school district has many fiscal needs that will be a high priority for the school board in the coming years. For those in the audience who don't know, Catherine, can you explain the difference between a bond and a levy and how you would use each to help our district?
I can't tell you by pure definition, off the top of my head, the difference between a bond and a levy. I know that one comes from the taxpayers and and or both would come from taxpayers, but they, there are rules and regulations about how they're used and what they can be used for. So I honestly, that's that's new information for me. I know that that the last levy that was attempted here for building a new high school did not pass with the taxpayers. So that's why our facility has was not improved. So yeah, there's no doubt there's a lot to learn for me as a new school board member, as there was for you when you ran in 2017. Like, as I, we talked about before, it's like drinking from a fire hose. I'm, I am researching a lot and learning a lot, but there is definitely still more to learn and it's kind of on-the-job training, as as you know. Thanks.
Great. Thank you, ladies, for joining us this morning. Like I say, you have just, I wish I had a participation trophy. I don't. I can't give it to you, but hey, you've successfully run the Wenatchee Valley Chamber of Commerce School Board Candidate Forum Gauntlet. You should feel good about that. Thank you for joining us this morning and for choosing to run for public office. We appreciate it. We appreciate your time. Next up. Yeah, welcome. The final race for the morning is going to be position number five, Julie Norton and Miranda Skeliski. We'll get these ladies up for you. Oh, you've got some glare going on there, Julie. Just so you know.
I know, I'm trying to fix it now. Bear with me.
See a rainbow across. There you go. That's a little better. Fantastic. And you're a little shaded. You feeling, can you see us okay there, Miranda? Okay, good. So same thing, we're going to start with Julie. She'll get to answer the first question first. Then we'll go to Miranda. You'll get to answer the second question first. And then Miranda, you'll get to ask Julie your question, and then Julie, you'll get to ask Miranda her question. Again, a reminder, 90 seconds. 15 seconds, so I'll try to successfully give you a sign and then we will let you know your time is up at 90 seconds. So if we are ready, Julie, we're going to start with you. The question you have is what is the single most important trait, attribute or experience you would bring to the school board?
Thank you, Shiloh. Aside from my current experience as a member of the school board over the last year, the most important traits or experience that I would bring include my experience as a parent and as a government attorney in my professional practice. My experience as an attorney focuses on government representations, so I understand the district governance and operations, board responsibilities and roles. And I understand how to draft and review policies that that we would need to implement at the board level. So I think that my professional background really helps me in that front. And also, as I mentioned, being a parent of three relatively young students in the district, it causes me to be extremely invested in what they're learning. I can provide feedback to some of the programs and services as I see them play out in process in my in my own home and in my conversations with other parents. So there's and there's sometimes a disconnect that we're seeing at the board level, what we're hearing from our administration versus what parents experience. So I think it's helpful in that regard to be able to bridge that gap and say, I hear what you're saying. This sounds great, but the parents aren't understanding it, aren't seeing it. How do we make this more user-friendly for everybody? So I think those two, my professional background and my experience as a parent are really the two biggest factors that I bring to to being on the board.
Great. Thank you, Julie. Miranda, you get the same question. What is the single most important trait, attribute or experience you would bring to the school board?
Thank you for the question. One trait that I would bring is having effective communication and the communication skills that provide transparency to all involved members of the community. I provided this trait through the years of volunteer work I have done for this valley through the various entities such as Campfire USA, Gear Up, the Avid Program, VIPS, which is a volunteer in police services through the Wenatchee Police Department, the Knights of Justice, which is through the Wenatchee Valley College, Special Olympics and my experience with the internship that I had at Wenatchee Police Department as a community outreach coordinator. All of that work that is involved is serving with the community and it's building the trust with all members of the community. The community members involved in these programs not only know that I do everything with the best intentions, but they also can rely on me, knowing that I am willing and I'm compassionate in fulfilling these duties and completing the tasks that are asked of me. I am here to help to bring a positive and measurable change to this community. And I want to bring these traits to the school board, to the community, to the parents, to the educators. And most importantly, I want to bring it to all of our students here in this valley as well. This includes to all individuals who are not only have children in the community, but want to be proactively involved as well. And it's about the success in the community in educating our youth here in the valley.
Thank you, Miranda, for that answer. Miranda, we're going to start with you for question number two. And that is, what is the most significant issue facing the district in the next four years? And how would you propose the Wenatchee School Board address it?
Yeah, so our district's current enrollment enrollment rates are currently low. As one of the other members stated, it was it was between about around 400. And that's predicted to be low in the next several years. That can mean fewer dollars that are supporting our programs and our staffing through the Wenatchee School District. And that, so we provide thoughtful decision-making around the allocation of our resources needs to be really crucial in how are we going to be utilizing those those funds. It takes many years to recover educational excellence if good choices are not being made. And the district is currently working on those with the strategic plan to advise our allocation of our choices. And then the district identifies community interest in in structural rigor-carrying relationships and reading and math improvements and on-time graduation, community partnerships and career-connected and extracurricular opportunities and allocating resources that are appropriately, and it's always an important long-term issue and never more than than the time that we're in now.
I'm muted. Excellent. Thank you very much. Okay, Julie, you get the same question. What is the most significant issues facing the district in the next four years? And how do you propose the board address it?
So I have a similar response as Miranda does. I do believe the enrollment decline and associated budget impacts are one of the more significant issues. For for folks who don't know, the district receives federal, state and local funding, and a significant amount of our state funding is actually based on enrollment. So when enrollment declines, our budget declines. And this is despite housing increases that are projected over the next few years. We're we're still projecting declining enrollments. So to keep our, you know, one of the first priorities is how do we keep our enrollment strong? So we need to develop and implement clear academic plans and programs and services to meet the needs of our community and really push those out to the community so they know what an asset the Wenatchee School District is as compared to some of the other options in the valley. In addition, as the budget does decline, we need to focus our attention on those resources that are directly related to the basic education. Federal dollars can often fund some federal programs specially, so we need to really look, use our state dollars to to focus on the teaching, basic education, those those programs that may not be funded through other sources. We also need to look into leveraging our community partnerships. How can we get more service learning or other options for students to achieve if we can't provide them directly onsite? The other issue that one of the candidates talked to is local control. We're losing control to Olympia on a lot of our programs and services. I know this is a different topic, but we as a board need to really work together with other boards to lobby Olympia and work with our legislators to really get some of the control back in our local, local school district.
Time is up. Okay, great, great job, you guys. Now it is Miranda's opportunity to ask Julie the question she has prepared for her, and then Julie will have an opportunity to ask Miranda the question she has prepared for her. So Miranda, you're up.
Morning. Morning, Julie. So here's my question. Besides your prior involvement in public service, which is employment and prior boards, what other backgrounds or exposure do you bring that will serve all underrepresented students, parents, community members as a whole?
Thank you. That's a great, great question. So in addition to my, as I mentioned, my professional work, I've spent a fair amount of time on other nonprofit boards. I'm actually currently on the board for the YMCA. I'm on the board for the Wenatchee Valley Sports Youth Foundation and the Arena Youth Enrichment Fund. These are all programs that either provide youth opportunities or are really dedicated to providing youth opportunities to all demographics in my sports foundation boards, we offer scholarships to youth that are on the free and reduced program and those those that are more underprivileged. Again, before COVID hit, as I believe Maria spoke to before, I was also engaged in getting out more in the community to meet folks, find out what resources may be needed or available to folks of all demographics. So between my board work and then again, my husband is a Chalene County Sheriff's Deputy, so we're often out doing a lot of the volunteer programs that the, through the sheriff's office to get out in the community, then the National Knights out. He's also the K-9 officer. So he goes to the schools and sometimes I'll have opportunities to to participate in that as well. So a lot of outreach based on my other board work in addition to professional work and my my student activities and that my my children are involved in every every activity you can think of. So we're constantly making the rounds with other families in the valley.
Thank you, Julie, for that answer. Great question, Miranda. Okay, Julie, time for your great question. What would you like to ask Miranda?
Sure. So Miranda, if the district were were given local control to decide whether and how programs like CSC, SEL and CRT-like DEI would be incorporated in the curriculum, how would you adopt or support policies related to these programs?
For local control?
Yes, assuming we have local control to to implement, to design and implement these programs.
That's a good question. I believe that we, to best answer your question, I'm not much in favor for local control. I'm not much in favor for local control. I believe that we need to, if we're gonna be exploring CRT, CSE, and DEI and having everybody and all stakeholders involved in this policy decision-making, mind you, CRT is not in this curriculum, nor we have a policy or any sort of curricula for CRT. So I can't support something when it's not even there. But for CSE and DEI, that is currently in place right now, we adopt what is through OSPI and through the, through the state. And then as the, being the board member, we create those policies and how we're going to be implementing those and receiving the feedback from the community as well, since it will be implemented through the school district. And we're doing a lot of the teamwork through everybody to make sure that we're meeting the needs for everybody as a whole.
Hey, thank you, ladies, for your answers and your participation. Like I've said, you should get a participation trophy. If I could pass one through the screen, I would. But this concludes your participation in the Wenatchee Valley Chamber of Commerce's candidate forum. We want to thank you both for joining us this morning and all of our candidates who were with us this morning. We appreciate you seeking the opportunity to serve on the school boards in your respective communities. Now it's our turn. Ballots are gonna drop here in the not-too-distant future, potentially arriving in our mailbox as early as this Friday. So be informed and choose to select the individuals you think would be best for the offices they are asking to hold by November 2nd. We also want to invite you to join us next week on Thursday, October 21st, for our local government candidate forums. This is the season. So as they're standing there on the corners, waving their signs, door-belling, you know, greet them with a smile and encouragement. And again, thank you all for joining us this morning. Thanks to our candidates for being with us and educating us. Best of luck to all of you in these final weeks of the campaign. And that is a wrap. Thanks, everyone. Have a great day.